Welcome to the July 19, 2023, meeting of the Murphy'sboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order, and we do have a quorum present today. We'll... Did we have any public comments? Calling for public comments? Anything turned in? Okay. Next is our consent agenda. Everybody's had a chance to review those four items. Any of those items anyone would like removed for further comments or questions? And if not, we'll be ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The GDO section of our agenda. First item there is Clary Park Lot 2. It's a 711. It's final design and site plan review of a 4,874-square-foot convenience store and 3,333-square-foot gasoline canopy on 1.8 acres, Zoned CH in GDO 1, located along Medical Center Parkway and Willow Oak Trail. SE, Murphy'sboro Medical LLC is the developer. Ms. Green, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to present this to you. You do have on the agenda an item for final design and site plan approval for another out parcel located within Clary Park Development. It's Lot 2, and Lot 2 actually has frontage along three streets, so that's a bit of an unusual situation in Murphy'sboro, but not for this development. In the Gateway, of course, they do design these buildings with four-sided architecture. And this project was presented to you last month for initial design review. The reason it's back to the Planning Commission is because the applicant was looking at changing the location of the gas canopy, and I'll go to a site plan, and I think it will help you. And last year, you reviewed a version of the plan that did have the 711 closer to Medical Center Parkway and the gas canopy closer to Robbie Corle, which is the street to the top of the page that you have on your screen. I think after preparing for permitting and looking at the project, the applicants were interested in asking the Planning Commission to allow them to flip that. So the gasoline canopy now is located along the Medical Center Parkway frontage and the building along the Robbie Corle frontage. I think staff and Planning Commission last month were supportive of the concept, particularly because on the north side of this property, there are hundreds of rooftops. There are apartments, proposed townhomes proposed, there are existing single-family homes and existing apartments within the area. Clary Park, the planned development that was approved by Planning Commission City Council presented a walkable mixed-use development. And of course, gas stations aren't inherently consistent with that type of development, but we think, considering they're on a major arterial in these out parcels, that it was probably a good move to flip the location of the gas canopy. But in an effort to ensure that they were meeting the design standards and expectations that we have, not only in the Gateway, but for a lot of gas stations, they upped their game when it came to the canopy. So the version that they have now is very similar to the gasoline canopy that's at Lot 19 that Planning Commission discussed last year. Planning Commission shared that these type uses located in the gateways into our community, particularly in the Gateway overly district, near interchanges, was an area of opportunity that you wanted to look at pretty closely. And so the architecture is reviewed, of course, as part of the process, and feedback was given, and they were willing to incorporate that feedback into the design. So I might zoom in just a little bit, and you can see this canopy. It has two colors of brick. It has, well, I've done something. Brackets, decorative back brackets to make it more interesting. Of course, a pretty hard and fast rule here in Murphy'sboro is not to have flat roofs on gasoline canopies. That's something that, for years, we've implemented in Gateway, and it's also written into our design guidelines. So you can see the rooftop here does have a pitched roof and has some interest there as well. Regarding the building, they did, of course, veer away from the standard that you might see for a 711 prototype. In the Gateway, we have some standards that we've written for community that are above and beyond Murphy'sboro Design Guidelines. And some of those things that they've changed is, of course, raising the sidewalk so that it's not flush with the asphalt. They've reduced the number of bollards that they would like to have in front of the parking spaces. Initially, this location and their location west along, they had the flush sidewalks and an inordinate amount of bollards, but they have drastically decreased those and are only proposing them in the locations that have glass windows. And so their concern, I think, is smash and grab. It's less of a concern in this area, Murphy'sboro than maybe downtown Nashville. But as a corporate business, they'd like to implement some bollards, but came to a compromise with us to reduce the number on both sides. And so the building materials are all mostly bricks, stone, or rock. They do have some symmetrical siding on the building. And the colors were changed. They had white ephes, which, of course, is not an approved color material in Murphy'sboro. They've placed that with more an earth-ton color and drastically increased the amount of brick. We worked the location of some of the doors and windows to add some symmetry. And so we think that they've done quite a bit to marry Murphy'sboro's community standards with their own brand image. Additionally, gas vents are always a thing that we look at with gas stations, the location of those vents. They're really large pipes that stick straight out of the ground. And the applicant and our staff explored many different options on how to work with those gas vents. And one of those options was incorporate them into the canopy of the structure. Unfortunately, that would mean that the vent stacks would stick above the canopy and look more awkward. And so we are recommending to you to approve the plan that they're presenting to you, which is locating the tanks, underground tanks, on the side of the property, the least visible location adjacent to some landscaping. And then that'll have the gas fence there so that you're not looking at those large ugly impertinences that aren't appropriately screened along Med Center, along Willow Oak, or along Robbie Corle. So we think that, given the location, it's the best location for that type of an element. Of course, I shared that with them since it is something we've talked about before. When this project first came to the Planning Commission, there was quite a bit of conversation about signage. I think in particular, some of that was window signage and temporary signage. And so the applicant presented a concept to Planning Commission then, and they are keeping that as a part of this plan. They are committing to meeting our GDO 3 DRC signage requirements for this property, which is our standards that have the best ability to speak to regulating the window signs and temporary signage here. And so they are volunteering to put that on the property. They did that with the previous plan. And with this revision, they want to keep that as a part of approval. They're not looking to get out of that since they know it was a very significant conversation with the Planning Commission, so that it was a part of the plan as well. The site will be required to install Streetscape Master Plan elements along three streets, since they have frontage along three streets, and they're showing those elements here. They're showing some of their formal open space between the building and Willow Oak Trail. See, there's a better image. There you go. And incorporating the exact same pavers that are used throughout the development and the linear park that has been approved and is under construction now with the Planning Commission. And then they have some, of course, additional, some seat walls, some seating, some decorative lighting bollards that provide some pedestrian-scale lighting within this area. They have been able to address most of staff comments. Really, we have just a few minor comments that I think are more cleanup, that we would ask that you make conditions of approval today. So if you do decide to approve this initial design review and site plan, we'd ask for you to do it to subject all staff comments. Do have representatives here today that can speak to you. I know they have an attorney who can speak to you regarding the signage if you have any questions, and they have some members of their design team that can talk about the design as well. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions? I just wanted to confirm on the first set of pictures at the beginning of this that we were looking at. It shows the landscape plan on there. Shows one rendering with the landscape and one without. When we're looking at pictures like that, is that... How many years would it take to get to the point of what we're looking at? You know, I know the landscaping is all fully there.
Sure.
Because it looks very nice.
It does look very nice.
I wonder if it's going to take 12 years before it looks like that, or is it fairly soon?
I'm going to ask them to come talk to us in just a moment about that, but you did help me remember something else that I wanted to mention. Outdoor storage in the Gateway is absolutely prohibited. It's not permitted. Sometimes with gas stations, they like to have some impertinences outside. Thornton's has a very well-designed outdoor enclosure that screens like ice machines, propane tanks, things like that. So this facility has a brick wall here that you can see is beyond the building. The aesthetics is very similar to the building, so when you look at it, it won't stand out like it's a separate color or material. And it's also partially blocked by the enclosure and the adjacent landscaping. And so in this area, they do have some outdoor storage. And we're talking about landscaping. I know that's going to be important when you consider that. And I just wanted to mention to you how they were screening that as well. And I'll ask their design team to come up and talk about the timeframe. The GDO has separate landscape requirements that require material to be larger when it's planted than it is outside the GDO. So that is one of the opportunities we have. We require at planting along the streets, the shrubs need to be 36 inches tall, which is three feet, or there needs to be a berm. In this instance, they're doing 36-inch shrubs. The idea is that it helps screen parked cars or helps screen the view into the building, but not block the building. So at installation, those shrubs will be 36 inches tall. Unfortunately, Mr. Barbie isn't here, so if you don't mind, and I kind of defer to the applicant to talk about the other materials.
Sure.
Hi, my name is Morgan Salzman. I'm with the Civil Engineering Team, Kimmy Horn. Our landscape architect is not here to answer that question, but we can get that to you in writing and have...
That's just a general, you know, are we looking at a image? And it was that first image where we saw the rendering with the landscaping, and then the rendering B was without landscaping. I just wanted to confirm that was like a, you know, actually what we're going to see on that site within a year or two, I would hope.
Right. I believe that would be the case, but to confirm that, I'd have to speak to our landscape architect.
Okay.
Sorry, excuse me. The underground tanks, with those being on the edge of the property, you know, what's next door to that? And I'm sure you guys, it's highly regulated on the underground storage tanks, but just curious on if that impacted anything next to the lot.
We haven't had a site plan for the next-door property owner yet, but we asked for the representative behind, who's the developer, to sit in the meetings with the builder, who's 711, their design team, so we can understand what's next door. And he gave us hints, Walter Shaded, but he didn't give us any commitments. And so the landscaping, actually, that they have there is more than we would normally require based on the conversation with the developer to help screen that. But they haven't disclosed the use there, unfortunately.
How far is it from the edge?
Oh, yeah. It's at least, from the drive aisle, it'll be at least 30 feet. But then there'll probably be additional requirements because the Gateway requires a separation of 15 feet to adjacent property lines, so there'll be 15 feet on either side. And then beyond that, however the site's designed, I don't know.
Given that they build, you know, gas stations, I assume they are aware of that, but curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And this is final design and site plan review for this item.
With our on, I make a motion. We approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. And we have one more item in the GDO part of our agenda, and it is Waterstone Lot 1 and 2, Medical Office Building, Murph 4. It's initial design review of a 40,919-square-foot medical office building located on 3.5 acres, Zoned MU in GDO 3, located along Gateway Boulevard, Kennedy Drive, and Carl Adams Drive. AgileTus Property Development is the developer. Ms. Green.
Thank you. This next item is for you to consider. Initial design review of a proposed structure located on two lots that exist in Murphy'sboro. On the screen, you can see an ortho image. And these are the two lots proposed to be developed at this time. It's Slots 1 and 2, and they're part of the Waterstone development. Just to the north or top of the sheet is the Gateway Island and Pond that I'm sure that we're all familiar with. And near this property is the Sleep Center and the Red Realty Building. You can see that it has frontage on Gateway Boulevard and Kennedy Drive, both of which are public streets that are also public rights-of-way. And the reason I mention that is that it also has frontage along Carl Adams Drive that is a public street, but it's privately maintained. So Carl Adams, if you were to look closely, you can see that the property line goes through the center line of the street as opposed to the edge of the right-of-way on other streets. And that's because it is a public street available to the public but maintained by the Owners Association here. And so it's privately maintained, and that'll come, I think, as a topic of discussion in just a few minutes. This property will have a subdivision plat to combine these two lots into one lot of records so that they don't need to design around that center lot line. I think that will be helpful since it's going to be one structure with the parking lots. It is located in the GDO 3, which is the area of our community that has an additional Owners Association review process attached to it. That Owners Association review process is a private process, but sometimes it's a little confusing because the city participates in that private process. And so the city has been majority landowner in this area. I don't know if we are or not, but the city facilitates meetings for the DRC, which is the organization that reviews development for the Gateway Owners Association here. And so this project has been to the DRC there. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Mr. McKnight would be glad to answer about that project and their feedback. This plan is to construct a medical office building. And of course, this is located directly across from Ascension St. Thomas Hospital, adjacent to other medical users, so it seems like a good use for the property. The building is a three-story structure, approximately 48 feet tall. And at initial design review, the primary focus is to get feedback on... I keep thinking they're talking to me. Feedback on the architecture of the building, so I'd like to walk you through that as well. It will come back to you for final design and site plan approval, similar to the 711 you just reviewed. You reviewed it last month, initial design review, and this month for final design review. And so I'll go to the site just a little bit, and you can see the project here. The orientation is the same as it was on the ortho photo, so they have the one-three-story structure with a parking around the building, with most of the parking on the side and then just one bay of parking between the streets and the project. The building, we believe the materials proposed with this building, and I'm going to go ahead and pass this board around while I talk about the architecture. Steph believes that the materials presented with this building are consistent with the Gateway and the DRC and that they are all brick or mostly brick. There are some areas of ACM or metal panels, but the building is utilizing three colors of brick. Those are fine art velour and charcoal gray with charcoal gray as the base material. Dove gray velours utilized in recessed panels. And what you can't see in the flat renderings is that they do have some recessed panels on the building and undulation in the wall plane. So they can break up that horizontal facade, add some shadow lines, dimensions, and reinforce the verticality of the structure. So they've been able to do that with breaks in the wall planes. And I think this elevation probably shows a little bit better, although it is smaller. Let me see if I can zoom in. So you can see that the shadows depict some recessed bricks, and you can see some areas that project and add that interest into the roof line here. There are various elevations of the building. They're proposing, since it's a multi-story structure, for the first floor to be the base of the building, which is not unusual for these tall structures. And so you can see that the base is defined mostly as the first floor with additional stories. The roof is flat with raised parapets creating height variations. Metal panels and bronze are applied to the pop-up rooftop elements. And so you can see when I mentioned that, it's this area here. Also proposed is the... But two things that are a bit unusual. I wanted to make sure to get the Planning Commission's feedback today. One is the covered drop-off does propose a design similar to this. It's not very big. They're proposing metal as the columns. And then the composite metal is proposed on the cornice with ACM wrapped columns and pre-manufactured metal and glass canopies. They're actually proposing a metal and glass canopy, which is a little bit different. That canopy, though, is relative to the size of the building, is fairly small. And so we would ask for the degree of the angles for that so we can look at that in the future. So that's one of the areas I wanted to be sure to get feedback from you. And then they are also proposing a carport attached to the structure. And so you can see that rendered here. And this carport is much larger. And it is anticipated to provide a covered parking for the medical providers into the building. And so they're showing it as a metal carport. And in our standards, we say that detached or attached accessory structures should have similar architecture to the main building. And I would say that the building is a brick building. It's not a metal building, and so I would wonder how brick could be incorporated into the design of this building. But also, one of the elements that I wanted to mention is the location. And I need to go to site plan so you can see that, of the carports. Here you go. It's not evident, I think, unless I point it out to you. The carport is proposed to be located here, and that's in the red. Maybe I'll try to zoom in if I can do that well. And then cover these spaces. You can see attached to the building. And so the two areas that I shared with them is that the GDO requires the structure's exterior design, this is for parking structures, shall architecturally be harmonious with the development. And so as I shared, the structure is a brick structure, and the carport is metal, ACM, and then has the cap. Additionally, the design guidelines state that parking structures should be located to side or rears of buildings and not located in front of the buildings or on primary streets. And so with this location, they wanted to present this to you as an option. You may recall, I said, two of the public streets. They're all public streets, but two of them are owned by the City of Murphy'sboro as public right-of-way. And one of the public streets is maintained by the Owners Association. And so they would like for you to consider allowing the carport to be located between the building and the street that's privately owned and not complying with that standard. And so I told them I'd be happy to present it to you and get feedback from Planning Commission regarding that standard. Initially, I just asked them to move it to the side of the building because I thought it would be less prominent, but they really wanted the opportunity to discuss that with you today. And I shared with you the material board, which are earth-ton colors, and I think that they're consistent with what's out there now. But if you have any questions about the plan, I'd be glad to answer them. I think their team would like to come forward to you and maybe present some more details on the project.
Okay. Any questions before we hear from the team?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Hello. My name is Evan Foster. I'm with Reagan Smith, civil engineer. So to speak to the carport, the suggestion was made to move it to the east side of the building, but some of the existing challenges we have there is there's the existing eight-inch water line that we are going to leave in place that runs north-south along that property line. We are going, we have a plat that's in currently. It was submitted for this next PC cycle that will combine these two properties but leave that water line and easement in place. So we wouldn't want to move that car canopy to that east side of the building. We would really prefer to keep it where it's shown, where it would serve as a parking for the medical providers as well as a back of a house drop-off or pickup for patients on rainy days like today.
So are you saying, I mean, it looks to be there's still parking spaces on the east side, correct?
That's right. We don't want to put a structure on top of that water line easement. That's our concern.
I'm struggling with structure.
Yeah, the structure, though, is just, how many columns?
I don't know how many columns. I would say maybe six, guessing.
And the thought process is you don't want on the easement in case you have to fix the water line at some point in time, and then you're going to turn around and may damage one or all of those six columns?
Right. We would want to put those columns on top of that water line easement in case there was maintenance that was required. The east side of the building also doesn't have an entrance to the building. There is a, you can see doorways there, if I can zoom. But those are, whoops, just leave that alone. But those are to the mechanical rooms, where there's entryways in the back of the building.
My thoughts would be if we're even going to consider leaving it where it is, then it just needs to be a much better-looking structure.
We're okay to wrap those columns with brick and put accents to match the building.
I mean, I'm just speaking for myself. I'd like to see it before we approve it, unless this is just first stab at it.
Do we have any other medical buildings with parking spots that are covered? I can't think of any.
Yeah. I will make a comment that would be in your favor. So there's a building that's on Elam Road, I think, that the back of it faces I-24, and it's a carport. But the look of it during the day and then the way it's lit up at night is really nice. It's a compliment to the building. And so I think if we're going to, if I'm going to approve something like that, you want to make sure that that canopy is a compliment to the building and not just a compliment to the user.
Understood. Yeah, we would want to make it visually a compliment to the building as well.
And is it a glass carport like the...
It's not metal roof, is that right? Metal cover?
Yeah, I think we'll, yeah, we'll need to see, like, really, what is this structure that we're talking about going to look like? And, you know, my guess is it has to look pretty good if we're going to allow it to be or consider it to be on the, is that Carl Adams side of the... And I understand that is the privately or the HOA side of the streets, but that would be my thoughts.
Are you comfortable with us providing that, you know, in our next Planning Commission cycle?
If you want to, yes.
Okay.
But it better be perfect. Yeah. If you're asking for it at final design review, then it'd be like, we better love it when we see it.
It's going to be perfect.
As of right now, it just kind of looks like an afterthought. Like, we're going to just stick this right here.
Pretty sure my house in college had a garage, had a shed that looked like that, so.
If they're not built really well, they tend to, like, deteriorate faster than others.
Will it be its own structure or will it be connected to the building?
It will be connected to the building. It'll, where the door is coming from, towards plan north, there'll be the covered canopy. Covered canopy will continue to where it's east-west along the plan.
So are there any materials that are on the carport that will also be implemented in or what we saw on the board over there?
Are some of those materials... This is owner.
I'm Greg Hayden. I'm the architect with AgileTus Property Development. When this canopy first came up, it was a request from some of the physicians in the building. And really, when, I expected them to back away from it when they saw the price tag of it. But it's something that they really want. They're planning to use it as a back entrance for inclement weather to take their patients out that back entrance. And we've made them fully aware it'll be designed to match the building with all the same quality of the building and everything. And as I'm just looking at here, I think we can probably slide it over a couple of parking spaces and even put some additional landscaping in between it and the side street. What is that, Kennedy? Kennedy Drive? So it will be fully designed to be complimentary and match the rest of the detail of the building.
So is it actually... So, is it actually parking spaces for the medical staff, or just drop-off and pick-up for patients?
Well, it's primarily parking for the physicians, but will be used for drop-off and patient pickup on inclement weather. And that's, as opposed to just building another drop-off canopy out at that entrance.
Or as opposed to drop-off and pick-up at the main entrance that already has the other covered entrance that I also think we need to discuss?
Well, I mean, these are taking patients out that have just come out of, this is an ophthalmologist group that's going in. So, they're taking them out the back entrance, rather than bringing them through a front entrance, so that incoming patients aren't seeing the outgoing patients.
But they'd be assigned to employees, parking spots would be?
Yes, they'll be for the primary physicians in the group.
So, it'll be for parking and for driving? There's room for both?
Well, the physicians will not park there when it's inclement weather, and they'll use it for patient pickup.
And the doctors are going to, okay.
Where do the patients come out after surgery, or procedures, on a day that's beautiful outside?
I think that they're either coming out this door, or there's a secondary entrance on the front of the building as well.
Getting caught up in some logical fallacies with it.
If I'm a doctor, I am mad, because I get to park there when it's sunny, and I got to walk when it's raining.
So, when the weather's bad, you can't?
This is their practice, and their patient.
Do you say you could move it over? Are you saying that's where, this picture I'm looking at looks like it's offset, like, four parking spots past the building? Is, am I looking at that correctly?
Yeah, it's sticking a little bit out beyond the face of the building, and yeah, we've got enough extra parking that we can slide it over a few spaces, and get it back behind that edge of the building, and get some additional landscaping in there, I believe.
Now, suppose the intended use doesn't necessarily affect the?
No.
Yeah.
I don't really mind whatever the intended use is, once it's there. I'm just, the aesthetic look of it. Well, I would rather it be perfectly hidden behind the building than have an overhang, personally. And if it matched aesthetically more of the building than what it does right now, it's just my thoughts out loud.
Well, you could consider, if it was just for patient pickup, it could be smaller, look better, and less obtrusive to the?
Yeah, well, I guess it depends if you're doing a full drive-through canopy, as we often do, then it really is a little bit smaller than this, but not hugely smaller, by the time you make it big enough to accommodate a couple of cars underneath it.
And you said somebody's done it well.
Yeah. Front Street Partners is the name of the organization, and they have an office building on Elam Road before you get to Joby Jackson. And the rear of it faces 24. So, whether if you're going east or west, it's a compliment to the building. Let's just put it that way.
Yeah, I'm confident in the design that we would bring back for the next meeting, that would meet the criteria and quality level that you're going to be looking for.
Are you saying it's probably advantageous for him to redo this part, instead of going to final design, and then hoping? Procedure?
Well, because, you know, we don't have to approve at final design either, if we don't like it when we see it, so I think they'd?
But he wouldn't have a shot at another revision, potentially, if it was?
We could defer it at final design. So, it's just a question, do you defer it now, and then have them come back and look at it? Or do you do final design, or do you do initial and final at the same time? Just whatever options you would?
Personally, because we have tenant deadlines on this project, I'm willing to take the risk and continue to move forward. And if we don't satisfy you in the next meeting, then we can either have the choice at that point of deferring, or take it off the project.
Yeah, and just for me, is there any difference in the timeline of approvals, if it's done at this stage versus final?
It'd be a matter that, if we were agreed to it at final review, if we defer it, then that's just one more, at least one more meeting, if not, two more meetings, that it's going to be seen, from their perspective.
But if he defers it now?
I'm okay getting them to final review, and looking at it at final review. I'm fine with that. I think I'd like the better, the building without it, but I voiced what I think it would look, if it was centered to the building and looked better, I think it'd make a big difference.
And I did want to say as well, that I think you need to concentrate on the other awning and the pitch of that. One picture we were looking at, I did not like. The other one, I maybe could live with it. So, I just think these covered entrances are, need some work. And to be honest, I just want to make sure we've also looked at anything or everything else, because we got caught up in, you know, a particular thing. Does anybody have any other concerns about the, just everything?
I just have a curiosity question. How do you clean the glass overhang on the front? I mean, is that easy to do?
Rain takes care of most of it.
Okay.
But yeah, you can get up there with a long-handled squeegee, and clean it when it needs to be.
That's just more of a curiosity.
Yeah. Yeah, the picture that was shown earlier is one that we just had installed at another one of our buildings that?
I can see my wife asking.
And it's just moved into this week. But that canopy, the glass canopy, costs significantly more than a standard roofed canopy does. That's a, actually, it's an expensive kind of item.
If nobody has any other issues, I make a motion that we approve with the hopes of us agreeing at final site plan review of the, of any changes associated with the parking area and the front entrance overhang.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Halliburton, was that the motion also subject to all the other staff?
Yes, yes. Subject to all staff comments.
All right. Thank you all. Now, we're moving on to plats and plans. Our first item is Dutch Brothers. This is Victory Station Lot 10. It's a site plan for a 950-square-foot specialty restaurant with drive-through on 1.43 acres, is owned PUD, located along Franklin Road, east of Swan Home Drive. Palmetto Capital Group is the developer. Ms. Rush, good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. Hope you're doing well in these rainy days. This next project is a site plan for Dutch Brothers, located in the Victory Station Plan Unit District. It is located north of Victory Station Way, and east of Swan Home Drive, along the south side of Franklin Boulevard. This is a site plan review for a coffee kiosk, coffee drive-through restaurant. Typically, these types of uses located outside the gateway design overlay districts are allowed to be reviewed per the zoning ordinance at a staff level, at administrative level. So, when you see those lists that come out every month with your agendas, with projects we've reviewed at a staff level, this is a typical project that we have on there. There's a provision within our zoning ordinance where we can take projects that normally would fit into that category, and bring them to the full Planning Commission agenda. And that's when the planning director determines that the public interest would be better served by requiring full Planning Commission review. And that's what was determined on this one. So, our planning directors determined that projects that have drive-through, or drive-through restaurants, due to a lot of the discussions we've had in the last several months, that those projects would probably benefit from having the full review of the Planning Commission. So, that is what's here before you today. So, the Dutch Brothers does show their drive-through lanes. They show 22 vehicle spaces. It's in excess of our zoning ordinance, which does require a minimum of 10 spaces. As we know from a previous Dutch Brothers that we've reviewed, that this is something that's necessary, due to the amount of customers that come there and queue on-site. So, their site plan is, like I said, access to the north is Franklin Road. So, primarily, most of the customers will be coming in via their driveway from Franklin Boulevard, and will wrap around the building and queue along the east side of the building, and then exit out. There's a secondary ingress egress to the south of Victory Station Way, but that really doesn't have anywhere near that traffic volume that you get on Franklin. In terms of site design, or site building design, it's the same as what you've seen on some of the other projects. So, it's a brown and tan-colored brick building, all brick. There is the blue tower that's at the corner. There's windows, and the drive-through canopy area has that canopy cover over it. It is a one-story building. It does include a Nietzscheha Tower, and, which is a material that's not brick. The roof is flat, has parapets, and they've provided a roof plan and roof cross-section, demonstrating that all roof equipment that will be installed will be below the parapet heights. So, staff has reviewed it, and is comfortable with what they're proposing. We are recommending approval of the site plan, subject to all staff comments, but we are looking for your feedback, if any, along the drive-through, as well as the building design. Their project engineer is Matt Taylor of SDC. He is here in the audience, if you have any questions about engineering and the queuing itself. Thank you.
So, I do, can you put the site plan back up, please? If somebody's going to turn left, um, so if somebody's going to turn left, what's out of here, and they're coming through the drive-through, and they're going to come, I'm just trying to figure out how many queuing spaces that you're going to have, if you're trying to turn left, because that's going to be a difficult left from time to time.
Matt Taylor from SDC. Are you talking about this movement here, Mr. Halliburton?
I am. Yes, sir.
So, that driveway would handle approximately three cars back to, like, along this line, and another approximately two cars that way, so approximately five that way. My gut tells me, if you're turning left here, you're going to come down, and you're going to go down to the signal at Fortress.
Okay, I agree.
And, I think it's Battalion, maybe.
I see what you're saying.
I was trying to figure out where?
Yeah. That makes sense.
To Victory Station.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other comments or questions?
If there are none, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have the, I'm going to say, Yana Holly Group. Site plan, five commercial buildings totaling approximately 19,345 square feet, on 3.8 acres, zoned commercial fringe, located along South Church Street. Yana Holly Acquisition LLC is the developer. Want to correct me on that, Ms. Rush?
I think you said it pretty good. That's pretty much better than I can say sometimes. So, this site plan review, similarly to the last item, is also here before you, because there are drive-through lanes proposed. So, this is on one lot of record, there's a proposal for five buildings. You can see them, it's, you can zoom into the next one below. It kind of calls out the different uses, and the building sizes. It was also listed in the staff report. So, building number one, which is the one at the top, is proposed to have a restaurant with a drive-through lane, with 40 indoor seats, and 10 queuing spaces. The next one below that will be a multi-tenant commercial building. The third building below that, to the south, is another restaurant with a drive-through lane. And then, the building south of that, is number four, would be a potential for a bank or credit union. And then, restaurant number, or building number five is also for a restaurant, but no drive-through. The applicant is here, and he can talk about what tendency has in line, or in mind, for these various buildings, but he has discussed some of them, including a Chipotle. So, if you've ever been to the Chipotle up on Memorial Boulevard, I know that they have a drive-through lane, but it doesn't function as a drive-through. Basically, you can go through that lane to pick up a will-call order, but it doesn't have the menu board and queuing that you typically see, like you do with the Panera or Dutch Brothers. So, some of the queuing lanes are here, they're meeting the design and zoning ordinance requirements, but he's indicated that they probably will not be utilized as a drive-through lane, like we typically see with long queues. In terms of everything else, the site has been reviewed by all the staff and technical review personnel. It does meet with all our ordinances and requirements. It is consistent with the design guidelines. Go down to some of the building design. Some of the concerns that I had, or the staff had with the building design, was the close proximity between the buildings. So, after the last revision, they were able to separate the buildings, and put more space in between, and create pedestrian paths in between the buildings with landscaping. So, provided a better site layout and design. The buildings are all generally compatible with each other in terms of their shape, flat roofs, parapets. They've provided information on rooftop equipment being located below those parapets, and provided a roof plan and cross-section studies. They've indicated that the materials are all primarily brick. There are some other materials, as noted in the report. Their civil engineer is SDC, and Matt Taylor's here, if you have any questions about the site, and the applicants here as well, if you have any questions about the building users, or building design. Thank you. Staff does recommend approval of this, subject to all staff comments.
So, were you saying building five was the only one that could have this modified version of a pickup or drive-through, or whatever you're talking about, like a?
Building five was for a restaurant. I believe it's for potentially first watch, which is not a drive-through. It's a sit-down dine-in restaurant.
Okay.
So, which one would be the Chipotle?
Number three.
I'm asking for the queuing. Also, I eat Chipotle, I go all the time.
And then, number one would be Kava, which, I'm not necessarily familiar with them, but I hear their food's pretty good. It would be the same thing. It's all mobile order apps, you're really picking up. So, instead of having to park in a parking space, like you do at McDonald's or something like that, you're really just pulling up to the window to fulfill your mobile order.
And on the western side of this photo here, like, the left side, is this, will this mostly be just traffic from this development, or will the adjoining developments also have cars driving through here? Just because I'm thinking?
Are you talking about here?
Yes, sir.
So, we are, we have pursued a connection with Goodwill to the north, because they've got a signal. We'll continue to pursue that. So far, we don't have an executed agreement from them. We think it would benefit us, as well as them, if they will agree to it. My client continues to try to work his way up to a yes, I should say. Just doesn't have that commitment. So, today, this would only be our traffic.
Okay.
If we were to make that, if we were to get that agreement, I think you would, that may be a staff level, or it may be back here, to add that connection to the north.
I like the space between the buildings, I think, given it some?
Yeah, I do, too.
Looks good, looks spread out.
We'll give all that credit to Ms. Rush. She?
We know.
Extracted a few more feet out of us there.
There's some blood on the table in the car.
If there are no other questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. Next item is the Wawa at Warrior Village Lot 1. It's a site plan for a 5,915-square-foot convenience store, with a fueling canopy on two acres, zoned commercial highway, located along New Salem Highway and Warrior Drive. JBL Partners is the developer. Ms. Rush?
Thank you. So, this proposal is? So this proposal is for a site plan for Wawa Development, which is a convenience store and fuel station. This one, we brought before the Planning Commission because their fuel design, or their fuel canopy design, is inconsistent with our design guidelines and inconsistent with what we've been approving on pretty much all gas stations for as long as I've been with the city. We are bringing this to you because they want to continue proposing the fuel canopy design. It is their prototype, and we'll get through that in just a moment, but I just wanted to give the explanation as to why this one is before you today. So it is located at the corner of Warrior Drive and New Salem Highway. Lot of activity happening. This is across the way from Costco and the on-ramp to New Salem onto Highway 24. So as depicted in the staff report, the building is primarily brick. It does have a flat canopy metal roof along the top. You do have a white ephist behind this area above the main front entrance, and then the canopy is depicted below, and you can see that the angled, flat roof, angled roof that covers over the canopy, the fueling pumps themselves. This does not have a drive-through restaurant. It is strictly a store. They will be providing food service, so there'll be an opportunity to order food and take out food, but there's no onsite dining. There's no indoor tables. There's no outdoor tables. So it is something that is pretty popular where they've established in other locations. The fueling canopies are along the front, fronting along New Salem Highway. The only ingress egress into the site is from the private drive. As we saw on the overall site plan, this is a commercial development that has a new road, a circle road, that comes off of Warrior. There is no direct driveway access from this property to New Salem or onto Warrior, so it's all from the private drive, and that will help with the queuing. A traffic impact study is requested as part of the conditions of approval so that we can take a look at it in terms of any improvements or traffic impact issues. So here are the building elevations. As I touched on, you could see the variation in brick. They do demonstrate that there's some articulation to the building where there's some variation to the wall plane and some variation to the roof line. So primarily, the reason here is due to it's a canopy and the flat roof. The applicant has submitted documentation, which was part of your PC application packet, that this is trademarked, that this is their prototype building, and as part of their trademark, it is that canopy itself. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know the ins or outs of all of that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that is part of the documentation for you to take it all into consideration, and they're here in the audience as well to answer any questions. So I would like to ask if the Planning Commission could discuss these issues and then provide any recommendation or feedback. I did not include a condition about the canopy until this discussion happened, so if you feel that the trademark and the prototype is adequate, the conditions do not include any changes to the canopy. If you feel that the canopy does need to be changed to comply with our design guidelines, then I would recommend that we add a condition that that would be required to comply with design guidelines in terms of the design, and can be brought back if you need to. Their civil engineer is SDC, and Matt Taylor's here in the audience. He can speak on their behalf, and I'm not sure if Wawa's in the audience as well. Okay. They're here as well, in case you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rush.
Thank you, Ms. Rush. Matt Taylor of SDC. We've worked with Ms. Rush and staff to make some modifications to the building as well as dumpster enclosure, and we made some slight modifications on the canopy, really having to do with beefing up the brick on the columns to make those look more substantial. I did wanna point out that, as Ms. Rush said, that the canopy is very important to Wawa's look, overall appearance. It's, it fits their building. If you've seen them in person, they complement their building extremely well. You really identify that they are a Wawa just through the canopy itself. It is, I think it's important to note, it's not entirely flat. It's got a profile to it, not only through the side and how that canopy is built, but it also gets thicker toward one end and has kind of a flare, I would call it. Wawa has also made fairly significant changes to the building itself. We've included a list of those changes to try to comply with the material requirements, the roofline requirements, the building plane requirements, and all the void space requirements. And so again, it's just the, the canopy's a very important feature architecturally and site-wise in identification, brand identification for Wawa. You know, and I personally, I think along with Ms. Jones said on that, the Design Guidelines Committee, and, you know, I think that the point of no flat canopies is to get rid of that old style, that is entirely horizontally flat, that does not provide any articulation or interest from a, from an eye perspective, and I think that this canopy, Wawa's canopy, does all those things through this design. So I think it meets the intent. It may be a different way to comply with the ordinance or the design guidelines, a different way to meet that intent, but I think it does all those things.
Can you tell me, Mr. Taylor, when I'm looking at the angle?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the lower end closer to the actual convenience store and the?
I think this view's probably the answer's that for you. They kinda meet together. Their, their building has the same kind of angle on the, over their main entryway there to heavily identify where their main entry point is, and so they really complement each other pretty well between that architecture of the building and the architecture of that canopy.
I'll say, I actually drove by a Wawa not too long ago, and it's a really cool canopy. I agree. It definitely doesn't look like your ordinary average flat. I mean, now that we're getting to where all the P.S. canopies look the same, they're all got a little hip roof, a little, so now we went from not having a flat canopy to having, everybody has the same other canopy. So we kinda went from unilaterally looking like this to unilaterally looking like this. I actually think this is really cool, and it has some kind of thing to set it off and go, hey, yeah, that's definitely a Wawa.
I like the architecture. I think it'll, it'll look good in that spot. Yeah. And thank you for adding the brick around the columns, 'cause that does look a lot better.
Yes, ma'am. You know, I, of course, I'm a traditionalist to a degree. The, the look of the building's fine with me. I just hate to think back of the number of years I've been sitting here, and we put applicants through H-E-double-L over their canopy, and now we're gonna approve something that's not, you know, those other people wanted to do something different as the same as Wawa. I think your comments, Matt, before you started making comments about the fact that we weren't looking for a flat canopy, and so the gist of, even though, uh, it was, it's already been said that, you know, we wanted hip roof, so it wasn't a flat canopy, so are we infiting with the fact that we just don't want a flat canopy, and which is, this is not? I think we're going off the reservation here a little bit of what we've done in the past, but I mean, I think it fits the standard of not wanting a flat canopy, if that's the way, if that's the way we need to look at it.
And I think there's times where I think certain portions of the building design is so important to, who call it, these national brands. I think back to like Costco. I think that we had, I wasn't the engineer on the project, but I did sit in the Planning Commission. I think they had something similar with their building materials or something. It was important to their brand identification, and that's why Wawa, that's why we wanted to point out the things they've done to their building, 'cause arguably, their canopy is more important than their building architectural, architecturally. And so they want them to jive, but they've, they have made changes. It's not that they're trying to be obstinate about that. It's, there's just certain things that are important, just like there's things important to our community, and I think they've tried to come to the middle ground on that pretty well.
Yeah, and I understand that working under corporate guidelines, I've worked for a big corporation, have to follow corporate guidelines on all my advertising, everything. So I understand that that's kind of their trademark, and that's their thing.
But I do want to say, I don't, I don't think we can hang our hat on that, because almost, I mean, a large majority of things that we look at come through with their, you know, corporate guidelines. I just wanna make sure we're not saying that. You know, I do think this is about the canopy itself and whether, you know, we can decide, yes, that's not a flat roof, like the ones that we saw. That was all we ever saw, and they did just, you know, were not, did not look very good, and I was glad that we came up with a change, but yes, it gets a little repetitive after a while, so, you know, seeing the way this looks, that one view of where you're looking from, you know, if you were looking from the street at the high end, that middle view, that would not be, I wouldn't want that, but the flip view is what you're seeing from the street, and, you know, I can, I can probably live with that.
So the Wawa sign, we'll call it, that's between the columns, is that something that would be, from a city perspective, is that, is this version, is that gonna work? Are they gonna be able to put that sign right there like that?
I don't know that we have completely vetted the verbiage being there. I don't pretend to be a sign expert. I tend to leave that up to attorneys, to be quite frank, Mr. Halliburton, so I think that is what they would like, but I don't know 100% that that's permissible. I think if it's not, then at least the red support canopy beam, I should say, there would stay, and maybe the text itself would just go away if it was not permissible.
I'm with you.
I was, pardon me. Personally, I really like the idea of it, but I'm kind of thinking the same lines along Ken. Not that I've been here as long as he has, but the amount of state gas stations and canopies that we've approved, that we wanted to be one particular way, I feel like this is such a deviation from that, that it would be almost unfair to those people that wanted something different, that we made them do the canopy with the hip-style roof. And I'd also be concerned about the precedent that it's set for going forward. So I, I'm personally struggling with it, with moving forward on that.
I would say that, excuse me, I would say that most, you know, we've represented racetrack over the years. We've represented, you know, independent users. Most of them have wanted, the guidelines don't say it has to be hipped or gabled, and it says it can't be flat. I think this is anything but a flat roof, so it's just a different way to meet that ordinance. I think most of those applicants have wanted just a straight rectangle on their roof, from my experience and what I've watched through this planning commission. You know, we have, I think that people have proposed, and it'd be acceptable if it wasn't a gabled roof, if you could find a different way to meet the ordinance, you know, whether that's entirely pitched roof, like an A-frame. I think there's a lot of different ways to comply with that ordinance, and I think this is just one of those. And I think everybody else has just seen, well, that's approvable, I'm gonna replicate that, 'cause I don't wanna come up here and do this brain damage, for lack of a better term. And some of that's my fault. I tell them, I point to what, this is an important feature to Wawa, and so I respect that to a certain degree. And I, and going back to the corporate branding, this is just a, this is a level above the corporate branding, 'cause it is a trademark. I mean, that's how important it is. They've went, and this is their canopy. They have the rights to that. I don't know all the legalities to that. Ms. Everwater could probably speak better to that with her background, but it is, it is more than just a pamphlet they're handing you and say, here's what we prefer. It's, it is a trademark.
Given that I wasn't here during the.
Someone let me make my motion.
Canopy problems, then I don't have any, like, consternation over going, you know, reversing what I did before, so given that, I'd like to move to approve this.
Subject to all staff.
Pending all staff comments.
Second.
I stole your motion.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
One no. Thank you all very much. Next, we have Rutherford Crossing Lots Seven and Eight. Site plan for two commercial buildings totaling 8660 square feet on 1.2 acres, zoned commercial highway located along Lescassus Pike. Nick Patel is the developer. Good afternoon, Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. As you mentioned, this particular project is located on Lescassus Pike, known as Rutherford Crossings. It's actually in front of the Kroger Shopping Center, and it's two contiguous parcels that are very narrow in size, and we've been working with the applicant for quite some time on this particular piece because of some of the constraints that are on this site. As stated in the staff report, the biggest item for this project, let me go to that particular page, is in front, there is a tributary to Garrison Creek. You may recall, behind the Kroger, there is Garrison Creek, which had a lot of water quality protection areas, buffers, very large buffers. This particular property originally had a 35-foot buffer that was put into place prior to the current owners purchasing the property, which left a very narrow portion here that fronts along Lescassus, and it does have two entry points coming into the site here and here, and we've worked with our transportation engineering folks to get your ingress point at this level and this level, and the site basically circulates one way. With a little bit of, at the frontage, being able to circulate in or out because of how tight the site is. Additionally, the site approved by our Water Resources Board, a variance to the 35-foot water quality buffer area to be only 10 feet, and that 10 feet is represented on what they call the top-of-bank along this frontage, and in exchange for that, putting into place mitigations of porous pavers along that whole frontage where all that parking is. You may not realize that's where the parking, most of it is, and then also additional plantings. You might recall, a couple years back, there were many of the plantings that were removed from this area, so the, with the approval on their tree preservation plan here, you'll notice everything with the gray box attached to it are new plantings in the area. And looking at the paperwork, we believe the plantings end up being 19 new trees and about 59 shrubs, just in that riparian era. And then according to our landscape portion, and this portion would be on the landscape plan, they would still have the regular perimeter planting yards as well as the base building plantings, and then, as you may have noticed, there was a comment from Mr. Barbie that showed perimeter plantings would still be needed in this 10-foot area as well as the shrubbery, so any of those car headlights that are facing towards Lescassus would be blocked from that view. This particular project does have two different buildings. The owner is looking at putting their Subway shop in building one, which is on the southerly portion of the building with a drive-through pickup window. They currently have a location, I believe, half a block down the street, and this is their location that they would like to locate to, to be able to have that opportunity for folks to be able to pick up their food at a drive-through window. It does have the required 10 queuing spaces. We believe that this kind of use, that's probably more in line, it's not like a Dutch Brothers where you need 20 queuing spaces, but it would also be the only restaurant use on this site because of the size of the site, and Water Resources has already reviewed it to ensure, as long as the two parcels are consolidated, they did not need a sewer variance, which a lot of times, our heavier restaurant uses do need that particular variance. When it comes to any kind of disturbance in the area, again, they would be preserving what's in place and augmenting those. what's in place and augmenting those things. As staff was looking a little bit closer at our staff comments, and I talked to the applicant's engineer, we would just want to make sure that that tree preservation plan clarifies that it also includes the augmented planting plan in it, as well as clarify that it includes the 19 trees and 59 shrubs in conformity with our Water Resources approval for their variance. As it comes to architecture, we worked with the applicant very closely because they are small buildings, very narrow buildings, that we've gone ahead and incorporated stone and brick into most of the building. These do have slightly tilted tower features on the corners of the buildings. When you're looking at all four elevations for that southerly building, the portion that faces Las Casas is down here where you have the drive-through pickup. So these canopies actually wrap the corner tower features. And then there's a canopy over the drive-through area, again, incorporating, the only place that there is ephesus is in the tops of those tower features where the brown, dark brown features are. Everything else is either stone or brick. And then looking at the other sides, as you can see, the bottom right would be facing the shopping center. And then the upper two would either be facing the interior driveway or the interior of the site. But again, most of the elevations replicate on all four sides. And then this is the building to the north, which they're anticipating would be a maximum of 5,668 square feet with up to four tenants in place. And again, on that one, the portion that would face Las Casas is in your top left-hand corner. The only places where we have ephesus is on one of the columns here. And then again, on those rooftop features, because of how much glazing that's involved, it was a little bit more of a challenge for us. And then on the backside of the building that faces kind of the interior, the shopping center, they've incorporated these column features to help break down the building portions. And then I also like to point out, and I should have pointed out in the prior drawings, is here, your window features are actually a little bit more vertical. They have a false window above the interior ceiling line so that it looks like it's more vertical from the outside. And then as you can see, when these little tiny lines, the HVAC units in place on that building, and really what we've been seeing on a lot of restaurant buildings, is making sure that that HVAC, the top of it, does not extend past the lowest parapet. So we're having them put that throughout their drawings because in some cases, we've noticed these units becoming six feet tall, eight feet tall, and seeing about three feet of the HVACs on the roof levels. So we're making sure to get those things taken care of up front so that really, we try to avoid fixing a problem after it occurs and trying to, you know, after the fact, put in screening that may not be appropriate to the architecture. But with that particular change, that staff would like to see, sorry. Spam. With that particular change in condition number five. And then just wanted to again clarify that we will see some additional landscaping that's not shown in the plans, but it is covered in the staff comments. The applicant's engineer, Bill Huddleston, is here in case you have any questions, as well as the property owners. Again, we appreciate their patience with this project. It was a very difficult project site to get anything to fit here and not just have another gas canopy, you know, going across, which there's another gas canopy just a couple of doors down from this particular one. And so they're very excited about this project. And for them, Subway really wanting to get a little bit more into the drive-through business for a better service to their customers and clients is kind of their biggest, I would say, want for the project site. So with that, if you have any questions, this is just our standard site plan review, but we put it on your agenda today because of the drive-through component.
Quick question for you. I just was wondering how you, does this fall, it's commercial highway, so the parking is what I'm
They're barely at the parking, right on mark. They had to actually reduce the size of one of the buildings because they're exactly at what we would allow for. I think it's called a commercial center, which is commercial, less than 25,000 square feet, I think is 225 square feet for every one parking space. So again, you might not realize, in fact, every time I looked at that first one, you don't realize that most of the parking is all down this whole side. And then you have parking here in the front, the front, and just a couple of spaces here on the side. The adjacent parking is not part of a shared parking arrangement with Kroger. So those are all basically Kroger parking spaces. And so that's also the reason why you have such a small development with the southerly building is only 209, 2,992 square feet. And that top building is only 5,668 square feet, which barely gets them the exact requirement for parking to what they're providing on site. And it excludes handicap, which we don't count towards their parking.
So the southern building, though, basically has one or two spaces in front, if you don't count the handicap space, have all the drive-through going around the outside. And then anybody that parks across the drive, they're crossing the traffic to come to the buildings.
Correct. Like I said, this is a very difficult site for traditional commercial buildings. And even for us to see one-way traffic through a site is a tight fit. But we wanted to, one, make sure they have to have that bypass lane to be able to get past any queuing spaces. And that angled parking is such to when they back up, they're not backing into the queuing lane as well.
I guess when it fits and, you know, I'd just be very concerned about this site in general with that much, to me, seems to be a little bit crammed on the site in trying to get out every single last. And I mean, I realize that's what they've got to do, but I think this looks like a dangerous site for pedestrian traffic, which if you want to have the people walking in your storefronts, I'm guessing they've got to
And I did forget to mention, the storefronts for Building 2 face this way, so their entry is here, and so they're parking, and then they're coming straight across. But of course, there is ADA parking here that can park and then come around the building without crossing the aisle. Whereas the building to the south, correct, you do have to come, just like you do at some of our other drive-through areas.
And basically the same in this one. I mean, the parking that you're talking about that's in front of the four, there's four parallel spaces there, is that what those are? Or are those
Yes, one, two, three, four, four or five.
And so the majority of the parking's across the street still.
Correct.
I mean, like I say, I don't necessarily like that, but it, I guess what you're telling us, it meets the guidelines and the requirements, so I don't know.
I mean, I would, I get exactly what you're saying. I just think about different, you know, whether it's McDonald's or even Chick-fil-A, there are times, based upon how the parking is situated, that you got to walk through where they are queuing. It doesn't make it right.
Yeah.
But it does happen from time to time.
That's true. That's true. Other comments or questions?
I tend to agree with you, Madam Chair. I think it's a, it's pretty tight.
Have y'all, has the applicant tried to get a parking arrangement with Kroger or?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering. We have dealt with Kroger in the past on these out parcels. They were small out parcels created over 15 years ago, and they haven't been willing in the past to allow us to have parking on their site. They're pretty proud, they need their parking too. One thing we did on this, we started out with our accesses going to the drive-throughs that are there closer to the highway, and that created a long strip of traffic where you could get up some speed and it would be a more dangerous situation. So to address that, we moved these accesses further back, more of a traffic calming feature so that you come in there and you got to be going pretty slow to get around to the front of these buildings. So we hope we helped in that regard. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Which way is the congestion of it bothering you guys? Is it the vertical or the horizontal? Or just the whole thing that's kind of tight?
It's just, it's just that it's tight and you're crossing over, but, you know, is a long, but I understand what you're saying, that it does slow it down to
We think the one-way circulation helps also. There's not a lot of crossing of vehicles going on.
That's true.
Yeah.
Versus other stuff out there? Is this, are there any other example to go by in terms of like?
I'm thinking of some others that are, seem to be this tight, and I just know they struggle. We of course want your businesses to be successful and not be any problem with people being able to go there and park and not say, oh gosh, I'll never get a space there, whatever. You know, we just want it to work.
Right, we do too. Nick's got seven Subways here in town. He's got 20 more in Middle Tennessee, so he's experienced in making these things work.
Yeah, I think the one-way parking does, it helps it out substantially. I don't know why I didn't notice that first thing.
I'm going to make a motion. We approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that's including the amended staff comment that staff mentioned at the beginning of the presentation.
Including all?
Yes, ma'am.
Of course.
Double seconds if you all agree.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, next we're moving on to new business. We have a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the maximum height of structures pertaining to the following sections. Section 25 is temporary and accessory structures and uses. Section 31, wireless telecommunications towers and antennas. And Chart 2, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios, including Chart 2 end nodes. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. I am not Matthew Blomley. You know me, I'm Gabriel Moore with the Engineer in the Planning Department and pinch hitting today for Mr. Blomley, so I hope to do somewhat as good a job as he would do, I know. But yes, as you read, this is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding maximum height of structures. Just to summarize that, I'll try to summarize as best I can these amendments. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the maximum permitted height of structures used in conjunction with government utilities or government public safety, as well as the maximum height of wireless communication towers. In general, you know, we've got towers in Murfreesboro, water towers, cell towers, things of those natures that are subject to the zoning that they are located in, the height requirements of that zoning. And there's an example given in the, in the staff comments there. If you have a tower in a CH zone, it would be regulated to the 75-foot height for that zone. And so what has to happen in these circumstances is either a height variance has to be given or a potential rezoning of that area so that it can meet the requirements. There are challenges to that variance, the meeting the criteria that is needed for that variance. Typically, you're thinking of lot size is a criteria that needs to be met, the shape of the lot, the topography of the lot. And when you're going vertical, none of those really are applicable. So it's kind of a challenging situation to put that variance, to make that variance meet the requirement, or the criteria. And we have had instances, again, my history, working for the City of Murfreesboro, I've not been with the City of Murfreesboro as long as Mr. Blomley, but he conveyed to me that over the years, this has been something that multiple requests have been granted for this reason. And when that typically occurs, is opportunity to look at the zoning ordinance, opportunity to maybe change some things, make some modifications when multiple variances have been requested. So this is specific to, there's really two kinds of items to consider. One is the exemption of height requirements to government utilities or public safety towers, as you will. That is really the first part of this ordinance amendment, is the exemption of those. And the second part of that amendment, which would be that Section 31 wireless tower, telecommunications towers. A little bit different in that, right now, for a wireless communication tower to be approved in the City of Murfreesboro, it has to go through a special use permit through the BZA. And it also has to meet the height variance, has to be given a variance for height. So those are kind of two separate things. Again, I've already spoken to the challenges of meeting the criteria for a height variance. But with these two items, the special use permit and the height variance, planning staff is recommending that the height variance be considered by the BZA as part of that special use permit. So that's kind of the second part of this ordinance. I will say, both of these sections have the caveat of no exemption within the airport, the airport overlay district due to obvious reasons there. So that's the summary. Hopefully, I've got a base hit on my pinch hit for Mr. Blomley, but if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Our recommendation, staff recommends that, obviously, we'll discuss instead of public hearing for this to be considered on August 2nd, 2023.
So being on the BZA, what I'm hearing you say is you're consolidating the two variances into one. Is that
That's correct, yes, sir.
Sound correct to you? But the BZA still would have the ability to dictate the height of the tower in question, correct?
At least consider the height. And I want to be careful with that, Mr. Halliburton, because I'm pinch hitting on short notice. Mr. Blomley had in the comments here, let me read exactly. Second paragraph on that second sheet, I believe y'all have this, I've got them right here, maybe.
While he's looking it up, I can probably help out a little bit too, since I helped Matthew draft this one. Really what it's doing is it's taking away the need for a height variance for the wireless towers and making it one of the criteria to be considered in the special use permit process.
Right.
So it's
I get that. I just, I don't want the authority be given, wiped for the BZA to dictate how tall these things would be.
Right, and that would still be within the BZA's
Okay.
... authority to look at, I think, like
Well, the fall zone and all that kind of stuff.
Right. Ordinance actually reads, Section 2, I guess that would be Paragraph 7. The maximum height of, this is in regard to the communication towers, Mr. Halliburton. Maximum height of respective antenna-supporting structures shall be as determined by the BZA as part of a special use permit. However, no special use permit shall grant authority for a structure to However, no special use permit shall grant authority for a structure to exceed the maximum height requirements, denoted, and, okay, I'm sorry, that didn't really answer your question. I thought I was going to answer your question. Summary was more what Matthew had put in his staff comments. The BZA has authority to place reasonable conditions on the approval of a special use permit in order to mitigate negative impacts to surrounding areas. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
It's just a process change, not
Exactly.
Yeah. If there are no other questions, I move to set the public hearing on August 2nd.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent job. We appreciate it. All right, next, we have staff reports and other business.
No other business here.
Anything else? Okay. All right, if not, then we stand adjourned.